Hi Dennis.
Hello.
Max.
When you've just overcrowded us with work, it's taken me, I'm barely able to get through the materials.
Says it's off.
You know, I feel bad only having one item on the agenda.
But doesn't the ordinance require that we meet twice? Is that why, because the ordinance requires that we meet twice a month?
They're all on.
Yeah, they're all on.
It does.
Jerry, all the mics are on.
Your second, right? Oh, great. They have a new one.
Oh my god.
I think I'll tell her.
Oh, good.
Should we wait a minute for the applicant, or?
Let's wait just a minute, and then also for Grace.
After the light.
Yeah, after the light. I remember that, and look at you.
They're coming to fix the mics.
Oh, our mics aren't working.
They're all on.
There's no one in here. No, yours is not on.
It is. It is? It says off.
Oh, no, you turn, if you turn it on.
Test, one, two, three. Mine's working.
But even when it's off, we can hear.
Try it again when it's off, it still doesn't. Hello?
Yep.
Got a yes right now?
Well, unless your voice just got this...
I'll talk softly.
Can you hear me?
He does need another minute.
That's fine.
While we're waiting, just a question. You know, we did the interviews for the AAC members, and there were a couple, at least one position was an alternate position that was open by, I think it was John, African-American, I don't know if I got his name.
From Sustainability.
Sustainability. Did he actually accept that alternate position?
He ended up not accepting the position. He decided...
Testing, testing.
Sorry, is my mic on? I'd like to call the Planning Commission order of April 10th, 2019. I'd ask everyone in the audience to silence their cellphones if they could. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Donenfeld?
Present.
Commissioner Garner is excused. Commissioner Hirschman?
Present.
Commissioner Hudson?
Present.
Commissioner Song?
Present.
Vice Chair Maruzzi?
Here.
And Chair Wood.
Here, present.
Six members present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. May we have a staff report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Mr. Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, April 4th. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
Thank you. Are there any, do the commissioners have any revisions to the agenda? I know it's huge. But I assume there's no revisions. Reverse the order. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I'm in.
Thank you, and is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Right, motion passes. Thanks. This is a time for the, set aside for public, members of the public to address the Planning Commission on non-agendized items. If you wish to approach us, please do so now. If it's on an agenda item, you can wait for the public, excuse me, just a minute, Flynn. Under new business, does the applicant, should he speak now?
Yes, the applicant should speak now under public comments, and then may be called back up by the Planning Commission if there are questions.
Thank you for that clarification. So I assume the applicant wants to speak on his project. They'll have three minutes.
Can hear now, okay. Good afternoon to everybody. I'm here on behalf of our Pinnacle Point project in South Palm Springs, and we are submitting Lot 7, which will be in front of you here in a moment. This is approximately a 2,800 square foot, single-family residence on the hillside with spectacular views from the rear of the property and the front of the property. It's a unique site, the setting is very dramatic, and the home has been designed to complement the indoor-outdoor lifestyle, and with specific requirements from the owner. I'm here to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience wanting to speak to the commission at this point? Hearing none, I'll close public comment. I'll move on to the consent calendar, which is the approval of the minutes for the regular and special meeting of March 27th, 2019. Is there any discussion? Can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes. There is no public hearings to talk about, and there's no unfinished business. We have one item on the agenda under new business, which is Pinnacle Palm Springs, LLC, for a major architectural application for the construction of a 3,224 square foot house on a hillside lot and an administrative minor modification for a reduction in the front yard setback and an increase in the building height located at 1747 Pinnacle Point. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. This application is Lot 7 of Pinnacle Point. Currently, there are an existing three houses that are located at the site in the 12-lot subdivision. The Planning Commission has looked at Lot 2 and approved that back in December. So looking through the site plan, the lot is located at the end of a cul-de-sac, and it has slopes on the rear side and the front side. The setbacks that they're requesting is an 18-foot setback off of the cul-de-sac, which allows a car to be parked in the driveway, 10 on the sides, and then 15 in the rear. So in order to get the 18-foot side, front yard setback, they're asking for an administrative minor modification to reduce that setback from 20, which is the required setback on a cul-de-sac, to 18. Looking at some of these slides, the applicant is proposing a landscape plan that includes several large trees, there are two pools in the front and the rear of the property, other decking, and other landscaping that is proposed around the site. In looking at some slides that will be, in the next series, will be 3D renderings of the current, of the, I'm sorry, the proposed house. You'll see that there's a current house on Lot 6, which is to the right of the slide, which is the brown house. So this house has a butterfly roof with a garage that protrudes out to the 18-foot setback. You'll see that there is a proposed wall, which is a combination wall of masonry stucco and frosted glass. Also point to a retaining wall that is to the left-hand side, which is, which will retain some dirt, and then also there is a picket metal fence on top of that wall. So through this series of slides, you'll see that the, this shows the relationship to the house that is currently existing, which is the brown house. Once again, this 3D rendering shows the cul-de-sac in the background, and then the foreground is the retaining wall with the picket fence on top, and then a rear shot, this is looking towards the west, and you'll see that the elevation shows a glass wall system that will go through the entire house with the rear bedrooms shown. So once again, this slide is the front of the house showing the garage and the 18-foot-long driveway. There is a slope there, but it does sit about five feet above the existing curb for the cul-de-sac. And once again, this is a view of the combination wall, and I have some photographs of existing conditions where this wall is being used in the Pinnacle Point subdivision. So the building height is requested at 18 feet, six inches. The height limit that is allowed in a single-family residence is 18 feet, so they're asking for an administrative minor modification to raise the roof height for the shed slope six inches. The zoning code allows in a hillside development to ask for up to 30 feet in height. The applicant is asking for six inches. When the project went before the Architectural Advisory Committee back in March, they asked about the six inches, is there a way to maybe lower it by six inches? The applicant could possibly respond to that to you today. But the project was unanimously approved as presented to, by the AAC, to the, make the recommendation to the Planning Commission. The Keller Material Board, I have the material board up here on the Diaz, if you want to pass that around. It is a sort of a brownish color for the main portion of the house, and then accents for the windows and doors, the aluminum frames. The roof is, will be a tan color, and you'll see the masonry walls and some stacked stone and a desert blend. We have, in your packet, there is a floor plan showing the layout of the house. Notice that the garage protrudes to the front. There are three bedrooms and a great room in the center of the property. There are sloped roofs, as I mentioned, a butterfly roof. And then this slide shows the relationship in height to the house that's in Lot 6. The house on Lot 6 is a little bit taller than the one-story house which is proposed for Lot 7. So it was important to have a relationship cross-section, so the Planning Commission could determine if the height is appropriate. If you remember, when we looked at Lot 2, lighting was an issue, and this exhibit shows the lights that will be up in the eaves of the house. So they're showing four lights along the front and four to the rear. There are, there's a condition of approval that the illuminations be limited, so that it does not cause glare or brightness up on the hillside. The next is a series of photographs of current conditions. So once again, this is the house on Lot 2, and the new house will be situated on Lot 7. This is looking towards the cul-de-sac. Once again, this is the rear of the existing Lot 6, and you'll see that the applicant has placed a sidewalk that leads up to the lot for marketing purposes, and there'll be some grading, but this is the slope of the driveway that will go up to the garage. Currently, there are metal pickets that are used within the development. This is a photograph of one. And then once again, there are these combination walls of, in this case, it's a, it's a vertical stone with the frosted glazing. So as I mentioned, in your, in your staff report, there are findings that the Planning Commission would need to make in order to approve the minor, the major architectural. There also are findings for an administrative minor modification to reduce the front yard setback from 20 feet to 18 feet, and increase the building height from 18 feet to 18 feet, six inches, for a maximum height of six inches, or additional height of six inches. I'd like to point out that some additional information was handed out to you today. There was a letter in the packet about some discussions between the homeowner association and the property owner. Staff seek some clarification on, on that discussion, and you'll see there's a letter from the applicant stating the relationship of the homeowner association, and then an email from, from me discussing his response about if it had received HOA approval or not. So that concludes my report, Chair, and the applicant is here.
Thank you very much, Glenn. Are there any questions of staff? I have a question of staff hearing now. Did you, Commissioner Song, did you have a question?
Glenn, just clarification on, if you look at the page, page two of your report, when we're looking at the area and the designation of the parcel area, the white line that you see above on, over the surrounded area, that's really the, the property line. It's not that we're, the developer is saying that they are going to develop short of their property line, correct?
There are, around each of the lots, there's open space, and that's what this box is showing. So there's the black box that shows the outline of Lot 7, and then there's five, 10 feet of open space before Lot 8.
Okay, good. So that is what matches this rendering that you have on the monitor, which does show some work of boulders and desert shrubs being improved along that open area. Is that correct?
Let's go to the grading plan. So if you look at the grading plan, it's not showing any grading onto that open space.
Okay.
If you remember, that was a question, we looked at Lot 2, and they revised it, so that they would not be grading into the open space.
Okay, so the rendering is just the artist...
License, I guess, to make it look good.
Okay, all right. That was my question, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a question for you, Glenn. On the, I read the findings, particularly for the administrative variances that we're looking for, the administrative modifications, I should say. When you looked at the height of it, what was your thinking that this would be okay, besides it being harmonious with the area, because it's a new build?
Right. When you look at the cross-section of the existing house at Lot 6 versus this house, staff felt that it was reasonable that 6 inches would be an allowable height, being that 30 feet is the maximum height when you have a hillside lot. They can ask for it, doesn't mean they're always going to get it. We prefer that it stay under the 18 feet, but 6 inches, even at the AAC review, the applicant felt that he may be able to work within that.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any more questions of staff at this point? Does any commissioners have a question of the applicant? Okay. Is the applicant, if you could come forward? Commissioner Song, you'd ask your question.
Hi. In the grading plan, the 18-drive approach, it shows something like 13%, slope, and then it goes to 3%, and then it goes to like 12% before it approaches the garage door. Was the, was the fact that you had a flat area or 3% area, was that because of the, sort of the walkway embedded in the driveway to go up to the pedestrian entrance?
Yes, all of those relate to one another, the variations that you see there.
Okay, but as a designer, did you feel that when the homeowner drives in, you know, it would, it's almost going up the hill and then plateauing that sequence? Were they, did you have a chance to look at that?
Yes, this was modeled with a low-profile car, just to make sure that upon the entry into the driveway, that it wouldn't bottom, that the car would not bottom out. And then if you look at the grading plan inside the garage, you'll see that the garage also has a bit of a slope as well.
I see. And the, the fact that if you did keep the 20-foot setback and not reduce it to 18, you would have two more feet to flatten a bit of your slope, did you look into that at all?
Of course, but the problem with designing something on this lot to retain any rear yard and have, as it stands now, the garage is minimum size, there's just not adequate room. It's very, very difficult and challenging to have something that works on this lot with, without, without that setback.
But you're, you're cutting the site. You're flattening it and retaining the dirt on both sides, correct?
Have to, yes.
Okay. On, on your, on your site plan, just for clarification, adjacent south of the driveway, was, were those meters, is that what you were showing?
Those are existing now, yes. There's a transformer and other utility components in that area.
So is that transformer enclosed with the CMU wall? Is that what?
It is currently. It's already there. It's built.
Okay, so it's a structure right adjacent to your driveway?
Correct.
Okay. And then back to my question, on, it was artist license to show the stacked-up boulders in that common area, but you're not planning to do any improvements there?
The HOA has indicated that off-site grading would be allowed, so we, at this point, there's already boulders and rocks in that area. So when that retaining wall is built, we could leave either the exposed CMU wall or do a combination of CMU walls with boulders in the front.
And then I notice in your package that you, you have the renderings for the site walls, but you don't have the documentation on the design of those site walls. Do you plan to follow your renderings, or what do you plan to do with the design of your site walls?
Well, the site walls are designed, as you see there, those follow, that matches the grading plan. The only thing that would be an exclusion would potentially be some of the boulders. There are boulders and quite a bit of rock in that area already.
Yeah, but not, your landscape plan, your site plan does not indicate that you are using plastered site walls or pour-in-place or CMU, or is this plexiglass, or is this quarter-inch-thick glass?
The walls are CMU block. The, and the plastered walls are going to be block with stucco, and the glass would be 3/8ths frosted glass.
Okay, held with a metal frame?
Either a metal frame or channels within the CMU block and channels within the vertical portions of the walls that you see to create a more of a frameless look.
Right, and the 316-inch glass, you think that it will span eight feet, 12 feet?
We would refer to the glass installer for the spans to make sure what size is appropriate. It might, might be as much as a half of an inch.
Right, so, but you're not planning to introduce any in-between post to span the glass?
No, they would be butt-jointed.
I'm sorry, say that again?
They would be, if there is a break, it would be butt-jointed.
Okay. Okay, and just out of curiosity, on your spas, on one end of your spa is about three foot in width, is that correct, at the very end?
Approximately, from the sit-down area you're talking about?
Yeah.
For the overall?
Sit-down.
At the tightest point?
Yeah.
I think it's a little slightly more than that.
Three foot six?
Not exactly sure, but somewhere around the four-foot range.
Okay, so it's really for one person to sit in that spa?
No, multiple people can sit in the spa.
I see. Okay, thank you. Those were my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Song. Is there any more questions of an applicant while we're here? Thank you very much for coming up, and thank you for being here.
You're welcome, thank you.
I now open it to the commission for a discussion. Is there any comments from the commissioners? Is there a motion from the commissioners? I hear Doug pushing a button.
I would, I would move to approve the staff report.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a first and a second. Are there any revisions to it? Anyone, Commissioner Song?
The revision is to document the design of the site walls as part of the package.
So you're asking to add a condition that basically documents the site walls?
The design of the site.
Site walls. Is that okay with?
That's fine with me, yes.
And Doug, is that okay with you as well? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. It's accepted? Staff get that?
Yes.
Can we have a vote, please? It passes unanimously. Thank you. I want to thank the applicant just for working with staff. I know the last project you had was a little more tenacious than this one. And I want to thank you for also choosing colors that were harmonious with the neighborhood and concern about lighting and your roof color as well. So thank you very much for working with our staff on that. We're going to move on to the agenda. And this is a time for Planning Commission reports, requests, and comments. Do we have anything from the Planning Commissioners? Commissioner Maruzzi?
What is the latest thinking about the general plan update and all the issues related to that in terms of public hearings and all the?
So I have drafted the RFP. Our purchasing currently has that and is finalizing that. We hope to have that out for advertisement here shortly, with the idea that we would award the contract before the end of the city's fiscal year on June 30th. With that, we would then like to have City Council appoint a general plan steering committee, and then we would get started on that work shortly thereafter. So that's?
Thank you.
The starting timeline.
Any other comments?
I have a comment. This is a shout-out to the Palm Springs Police Department and the Palm Springs Fire Department. Last night, there was a fire in an open field in the little Tuscany neighborhood of Palm Springs. The fire, along with the winds, raced out of control very, very quickly and threatened several homes. The Palm Springs Fire Department, along with the police department, managed to put out the fire within two hours. There was no homes damaged in the process, and most people were able to remain in their residence during the process. So I really want to give a shout-out to our first responders for a great job that they did last night. I had to actually evacuate my personal home, and luckily, it was fine this morning. So thanks to them. And then they stood watch over the fire for a good portion of the night to make sure it did not reignite. And I guess there was one small reignite, or hotspot, they call it, this morning. So all was good. So thank you to them very much.
Moving on, we'll get the Planning Director's report.
I would like to introduce our new planner on staff. Ivan, if you could stand up. This is Ivan Flores. With the hiring of a historic preservation officer, that opened up an additional position on our staff for an assistant planner, and Ivan just joined us last week. He recently obtained his master's degree, so congratulations on that. He comes to us from Santa Ana, and he has also worked at the city of Diamond Bar. So again, we're glad to have Ivan on our staff with us. The other item that I have for you on Wednesday of last week at City Council, City Council extended the cannabis moratorium. The moratorium applies to two areas in the city, and that is the Desert Highlands Gateway area, and then also a section of Demuth Park. There is a concern of potentially having an oversaturation of cultivation and manufacturing facilities in those areas. So we will be working on an amendment to our ordinance to address that saturation issue, and we'll have that before the Planning Commission, I would imagine, within the next couple of months. So just be ready for that to come forward to you here shortly. And with that, that concludes my comments. And again, thank you for such a short meeting and for coming out today. We appreciate that, and we'll see you in two weeks.
And can I get a motion for adjournment for the shortest meeting we've ever had? And I assume there's a first and a second to that, and we're so adjourned. Thank you very much.